Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Thursday, August 1st. We're called to order at 7:04 PM. We'll jump right into negotiations for Rural Development Inc. for Care Drive Land Development Agreement. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, at this time I'll be recusing myself from the meeting due to a potential conflict of interest.
Noted. Thank you. Okay, so Scott, do you want to...
Yeah, so we have had a couple of meetings. Well, wait, one more.
Week and a half ago, yeah.
I don't even remember what day of the week it was. Earlier this week. And so we've ironed out almost all, I think. Attorney Hardy, right, you had had one other outstanding. It was a question on insurance. You were just mentioning it earlier.
Yes, so the Towns Council had requested certain insurance coverages that RDI would have as we move ahead in the sort of pre-development phase of the project. We don't have any objection to that, but... And some of the language we had worked out during our meeting having to do with automobile coverage. And RDI will have the statutory limit for that, as well as the workers' compensation. Ms. LaRose was just going to check with the Fiscal Department about the other coverages, just to kind of make sure that what you were asking for was coverage that we already had.
Yeah, there is no comment. Yeah. So, as far as we know, it seems fine.
Looks fine.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, the crux of our last meeting was... There was some cleanup, making language consistent throughout. There wasn't any... Wasn't a lot of substantial changes. So, the track changes that you see in the packet is, by and large, just a cleanup version of what we had had the previous time. Just add a little more time to work with it. Additionally, there's the Exhibit C, which has the timeline. I think that's a first view for you when it came through in the packet.
Yeah, we didn't have that last.
Yeah, based on the language and the conversation we had, the changes that were made, I don't have any concerns with it.
Okay.
Just double-checking one more time to make sure there's nothing that...
I'm just scrolling through as well.
Jumped out, I read it.
Rereading through the red lines and...
Before we vote on it.
The... In 6-2, the autoapproval after 21 days, if no response. Is that commonly accepted calendar days or business days? Do you know?
You guys discussed it.
It doesn't define, so I'm just curiosity more than concern. It's not concern.
The fact that it's 21, to me, would say calendar versus days.
Yeah, I think the same, just curiosity.
Any reason why exhibits are out of order? 6-5, 1, 2, and 3 are A, C, and B. Then, no reason for it, it's not an issue.
Oh, no. We can put that in order.
We don't have to. It will just catch my eye every time.
I will put that in the correct order.
You know, when I saw that earlier this week, I knew you were going to pick up on it.
Jim would have said it if it wasn't reused, I'm sure. If I didn't get there first. 6-7 to 6-8. 6-8 looks struck, but 6... What was struck? I'm looking at the red line copy, anyway, on page 10, 6. The new 6-7 successors and assigns. And then after that, marginal headings pronouns is not sectioned. And then 6-8 is shown after that, and struck.
Yeah, it's struck.
I'm looking at the clean version.
Okay.
So, on the clean version, Section 6.7 is successors and assigns. Section 6.8 is marginal headings.
Correct.
And then 6.9 is nondiscrimination. Is that right?
Correct.
6-8 should have been up next to the 6-9 that was struck, but it just got dropped down.
It's right in the clean copy, so that's fine. Yep, I was scrolling through the red line. Because it's... There was duplicitous language down in, I believe, 6.17.
Got it.
So...
In the red line, it looks wrong. It looks like something's wrong, but in the clean, it's fine.
It dropped down below the paragraph, not next to it.
I didn't switch over and check, so thank you. Scott, in 6-21... The last line was struck in the red line. The "own" I see, but the "rights to"... Is there any specific discussion around that?
So, if you look up in the top, it's the party creating them. So, we had gotten away from saying that we want to own all documents.
Right, the "own" I got, the "use of".
It should still be in there, with all rights. That was not supposed to be struck and out, as far as "access to".
So, I get the "own" is the party creating, and information that was the town, stays the town's, if I'm reading the first couple sentences. But then the town's rights of use...
Yeah, I don't know why that got struck.
I'm looking at, on the red line, page 13, Section 6-21, ownership of documents. And the last sentence was struck completely, referencing the town having ownership and right... All rights of use of drawing specs and other documents prepared by the contractor for completion and use of the project.
So, one of the reasons that that was struck was because the contract... Some of the contract documents will probably be assigned as part of the financing. So, we can work with you around your use of our documents, but we are going to... Just in terms of kind of moving ahead, we're going to need to be able to assign the documents to our lenders, or whoever it is that's financing the project to go forward. So, as long as you're okay with that, then we can put that language back in. But I just... I was a little bit concerned about the town owning and having the rights to use our documents.
Yeah, I thought we had talked about adding language that we have access to.
Yeah, that's 6.19. We have the access to it.
Is that where we moved it?
Yeah, so it's in a separate section.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I knew we had talked about it, and we were between the two of them.
Yeah.
So, that's inspection and review, but not use. There's no use in 19. It's just audit, review, and inspection. And to be clear, I'm not concerned about the first part of that sentence that was struck, the ownership part. It's the rights and use.
Well, we could... If it would make you more comfortable, we could say something like, "The town shall have the right to use the drawing specifications and so forth, subject to the rights of, you know, RDI's lenders and, you know, consultants." We could do something like that.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Do you want me to... Let me see if I can put something in there.
Yeah, if you could. A couple more pages, just to scroll through one more time and see if there's anything, so that would be great. Scott, in 6-22, 1, indemnity. Did Donna have any commentary on limiting clause around insurance policies for permit? The developers' insurance policies permit?
She did not.
She didn't have any of them. I know they're somewhat reciprocal, so, between the two entities.
So, I've got some alternate language to add to 6.21.
Okay.
So, this would be a sentence that comes in at the end.
Okay.
"The town shall have the right to use the drawings, specifications, and other documents prepared by the contractor, subject to the rights of use of the developers, lenders, and consultants." Does that satisfy your concerns about that?
It does for me, yeah.
Okay. Brian, did you get that? Or I could give it to you afterward.
No, but if you don't mind, turn it to me. I'll put it in the document.
Incorporate it into the updated clean copy you're drafting over there right now?
I was doing that at the same time.
Thank you.
I don't have the clean copy, but 6.22.1, which everything was stricken, that doesn't show up on a clean copy, correct? It jumps right from 6.22 to 6.23?
No, it's still sub to 6.22.1, so there is no 222. 22 dot 2. But there is a 22 dot 1, so we can strike.
Once I accept all the changes, I'll go back and make sure everything align correctly.
Yeah. Okay. It's just indented one more level than it needs to be, because we don't have the dot 2 anymore.
Right.
Who did catch?
Okay. So, then, just... This is still indemnating. This is just going to go scoop back out here to the margin. Okay, got it.
Exhibit C, the timeline. There's a schedule. The second item there. I'm not looking to change it, but that date is correct, of July 15th, even though it's not in date order. It is the second item is earlier than the first item, right? That date is... Just that the date is correct, the application was.
Yes, we submitted on July 15th, but you're correct, obviously.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo on the date. I didn't think it was, but... The footnote around the funding rounds, like the one-stop and such?
Yes.
Assume it's awarded after one round, although two is becoming more typical meaning. You're finding you have to apply twice before being successful?
Yes.
When we left Exhibit 8, intentionally.
Because it's 60 million pages.
I thought so.
Yes.
I don't need it again. We've seen it a few times.
Yeah.
So, you have been working on that.
Mm-hmm.
If I recall from the discussion so far, we've made that one addition to 6...
6.22.
Thank you.
6.21.
You fixed the indenting on 6.22, I hope.
Yes.
The addition was earlier than that.
It was the previous section.
6.21.
Yep.
Yep. Was there any other changes you made? That was it, right?
So far, those are the only ones I've heard you direct me to make.
Anything else, Scott, on your side? On your side?
No, just... You had questioned the 21 days. There's a lot of dates referenced in there, as far as 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. It doesn't explicitly say anywhere that they're calendar days. I think I just assumed it meant calendar days. Is there a way to... Some place to... I don't want to have to go through and change every single one of those. I don't know if there was a place in here that we could just... You know, here and after, all days are calendar days, or something. Just so there's no...
Say, we don't have a definition section.
What's that?
We don't have a definition section, so...
No, I scrolled this again, going, "Did I miss one?", but no, there isn't.
Brian, typically, that would... If there's no definition section, typically, that would happen sort of in this section where we're doing some miscellaneous stuff, so we could just add it as 6.28, if you wanted to do that.
There you go. Acceptable. Or, by definition, day is undefined as calendar day.
Yeah.
In a contract, so I'm okay either way.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So, you looked it up, it is?
I looked it up, because I thought it was. So, contract days is normally meant...
That's fine. If it defaults to calendar days, just leave it alone.
Calendar days, yeah, unless defined, so I'm okay with it.
Okay.
As long as that's standard, I have no concerns.
Yep.
So, okay to save all other track changes as approved?
I am okay with that.
Yep.
Yep. Do you want to make a motion as amended? Or do you want to get that copy printed first?
No. I don't need it printed.
Just going through and cleaning up any formatting alignments, or because it had that additional...
6.22, 6.21.
Right, just cleaning up that stuff.
I'll wait for you. I'll wait for him to be done, just in case.
How is this one? That's what I mean. Okay. Let me print off copies for each of you and look at it one more time before you all make a decision.
Well, I guess I won't have to do it as amended.
No.
I'll have it in front of me now.
Yeah, we'll just wait.
Do you have a printer here?
Yeah.
Okay.
He'll be back. We're going to go to town, I know.
We're not going to go home, no, no.
It's just in the other room.
Office is down the road a bit, you know.
Make a quick trip. Careful. Find that language. Odd, a public body corporate and politic.
Yeah.
Okay. Of course, we're running paper in the middle of that. Him reloading the reams on that one.
Yeah.
I should have told him I was fine with doing it as amended.
I think you did, but that's okay.
Killing a tree, Scott.
Yeah.
Some of them need to be in printed posterity, right? Forever.
The watermark. Do you know if he took the watermark off? Because it says draft. I was just curious.
It'll say draft on it until...
Canceling momentarily, if you can... I think so. We do this frequently, so I hope so.
Well, even the copy he does now will still be a draft until we approve it.
Well, yeah, hopefully, yeah. It doesn't matter if it's not signed. It is a final, so...
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Yeah, if he wants us to sign it.
May have potentially left it, I don't know exactly.
I think he's printing another draft that we can put one last set of eyes on.
We'll see.
As soon as he's done fighting with the printer.
I have the printer, but the extra paper is crossed out.
Thank you.
You are correct.
Yeah, I saw him counting up.
I was debating whether it would say draft or not.
If it was a draft.
I was hedging it might not, but I've been losing one in that bit.
Listen, the recitals, number B has a period where it doesn't belong and it broke the sentence up. So you just need to fix it, the last sentence.
Oh, yeah.
It should be property period and then.
There's a period right there and then a comma at the end.
Got it.
Track change leftovers.
Oh, there's a space.
You're talking about the end of B in October, that? Yeah, okay. That is a comma, but it new lined on you?
Oh.
No, it just made it a period.
The punctuation is incorrect.
Correct.
It is a comma.
No, no, no. In between property and on.
Oh.
Brian, it's just an extra character turn.
Yeah, so it's actually a period after property.
Okay, that's why I was drawn to the comma and not the period.
So this is a keep and this should be a, so on or about should be the beginning of the sentence.
Right.
And that's part of B.
I agree. Thank you.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So is it ABC or is it now ABCD?
It's ABC.
Okay. So the second on is part of B.
Developer comes up to the next one.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah.
But it is a new sentence.
That is correct.
Not a period. That period belongs. Okay.
Yep.
It actually changes nothing except layout.
Yeah.
Can look at something so many times and still just.
Brian, in 1.8, your font changed. And then went back at 1.9. Or 2, that 2, I don't know why.
ABC? Yep. Was this supposed to have a heading? I'm not sure what the heading would be.
10. Hmm? You fixing it?
I'm trying. It's protein.
Seems like it took from there on through 6. I don't know why. Gotta love words.
Oh, wait a second. What happened there?
Which one are you talking about? 1.9? Well, it's not what I was telling him about, but that's what I just saw. Did we lose the heading? Or did we not have one?
Never had one.
1.9 doesn't have a title?
Yeah, we noticed that 6.14 also doesn't have a heading.
It never ceases to amaze me how many times we can read these and still pick up.
But if you read them enough times, you stop picking out any of that stuff.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. 1.9 doesn't have one.
Should 1.9 just be closing?
Yeah.
I would think.
Yeah, for a title. Closing is bold in the section. It's not because we bolded anything in the sections elsewhere.
Does 6.14 need a title or is it actually still part of the separability?
It is. It would be sub 131, 132, wouldn't it?
Do you want to make a change to 14?
I'm trying to come up with one.
I don't think we're sure what that would look like yet, whether it be a sub or-
Have you heard the title?
6.14?
Yeah.
How about interpretation?
Okay. Yeah, it keeps it consistent with the title.
Okay. Bold interpretation.
Works. Can you figure out the 610 and on thing?
No, it's still. All the settings, you didn't apply and it still goes up.
Perfect. Gotta love it.
We may have to just live with the indentation.
Yeah, I can. Pretend it's not there.
Oh, you're talking about everywhere until 610, it doesn't indent between.
It's because it went from a one digit to a two.
There may be a case out there that says something about it.
6.10, 6.11. It should have created the spacing.
It will.
You can never get rid of the ghost indentations.
Oh, are you serious?
Yeah, it does it on all of them.
Start all the way over.
Where you see it.
Yes, for sure.
I'm nervous.
It's in the sub-sub. Is that where you're seeing it?
I've dealt with that before when you.
Don't think we have any other that went that far.
No. But I've dealt with that before.
I bet you're right.
When a tab's over, it's only you're not going to be able to undo that. It's because you went from a-
Second digit?
A second digit. In order to tab it over.
Oh, it started right at-
At 10, yeah.
The second digits, that's echoing, sorry. That's potentially it.
Yeah.
That's why I can't win.
No.
Excellent. There we go. We solved it.
Brian, there is a change in the size of the text and I don't know if you care about that.
I went through all of it and I just made it all 12 point.
Yeah, it starts in 1.7, but yeah, there's this section through 1.9. Yeah, that was small.
Yep, I took all pages and made it 12. So we're good.
Sounds good.
It's consistent now.
But I wanted it larger on page nine.
Pretty subtle.
Yeah, that was the one I said earlier. I'm like, I think the font here.
I used to have to compare manuscripts for publishing and so I catch little things like that.
But we're still on 14 pages, so we're good.
I've stared at them long enough. Did the addressing break with all the changes we did before that break across? That was the only other thing I was going to say.
Address.
Personal preference is probably not matter, but 8 and 9.
Oh, under notification?
Yep. Like 611, did the address break over or 612 break over?
I think Irving kicks to the next page, but that's it. Yes, Irving asked kick to the next page, but that was it.
How did we do that when we took out the extra spacing in recitals? Okay, well, I don't know if it matters, but.
Oh, I noticed something else.
Okay.
On the notice to me.
Yep.
In 6.12, it's 574 Station Singular Road, not Stations, plural.
Catch. I've made that change.
Oh, was the font change that pushed it? That's what happened.
Yeah.
It must be right back after.
Yeah, that's why I saw you let. I was on it today, actually. I know. It's really nice.
Ow, my eyes.
You saw a lot of turtles today. It was.
Checking everything off before we.
I think I've checked enough and critiqued grammar. More fonts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am good if you're good. You're all good with the edits?
Yes.
As you see and read.
Okay, happy with them? All right. I'm going to make a motion.
Hold on, let me get back to the minutes.
Get you the right document?
There we go.
It'll obviously be as amended.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the development agreement and option to lease between Rural Development, Inc. and the town of Irving as amended effective August 1st, 2024.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye. All right.
We will get. We will get two clean copies, I would assume.
Two originals sufficient?
Yes.
One for the town, one for us?
You don't need a third original, right?
No, that's kind of.
Yeah, two originals.
Two originals to you all?
No, one for you and one for us.
Perfect.
One and one?
Okay.
One and one.
Yeah, let me hit print.
Excellent.
Hopefully we still have paper.
We're not printing that many of them, so one ream could have done it.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all. A lot of work in the last days and hours to get here.
Yeah, we just realized that the RFP was issued July 26, 2023. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow, almost to the year of the day, huh? How about that?
Yeah.
Wow. Yeah. It's been a long time getting there too, so.
It's a long time getting there too, so that's exactly right.
We've got a ways to go, but we're moving.
We're moving.
Getting there.
This is progress.
It is. It really is. It's exciting.
Yeah.
Our view's going to look a lot different. Our view's going to look different in a few years.
It will. It will. Although I think there's still some screening, so from back here, it probably won't look too different.
That's nice landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Most people will be excited to watch it come to fruition too, so.
Yeah. You'll have a bird's eye view.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be checking on the progress every few weeks.
It's true. This will be one of the most scrutinized construction sites. I didn't even think of that. These meetings happening here.
There'll be a lot of traffic, yeah. Well, and these two buildings do get a lot of traffic every day, so.
Yeah.
But we're putting up big screening that says stay out.
Yes.
Yeah, we will have to be really careful about fencing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll need to coordinate closely too on disturbances and everything with your schedules, definitely.
Yeah.
Yep, for sure.
Can't wait to get to that point.
I know, I know.
We got a ways to go.
We're looking forward to doing those things.
Little ways before we start breaking ground.
We're already planning interruptions.
Traffic flow and.
Construction. Signage, yeah.
Absolutely. Oh, we went during construction. Still closer to that end than we are right now, but yes.
We're here to see the bear.
Last meeting that Alyssa and I were here for as we were pulling in, I was right behind her vice versa. I saw a big black bear crossing 63.
Wow.
Just ahead of here. It was so cool.
And I learned that it goes through the school dumpster. And so they've had to keep kids inside for recess when they've had bears.
Wow.
Wow.
Yep.
There you go.
I'm a pet.
She's ready.
I'm ready. Thank you.
Like we need like colored panels or you do each one with a different button? Open the box for the signing day?
Do those have to be gold plated afterwards or not?
I mean, there's like one in each color for each letter or somewhere, each signer.
No, let's not make it that.
Some of those are a little over the top.
Yeah.
It is a big project though.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for joining us again and we're looking forward to hearing the results on the 15th. Hopefully you guys are.
Yes, yes, that's our first big milestone in our schedule.
Yes, it's very soon, so.
Yeah, we're feeling, we're feeling positive about it.
Good.
They've been, CDEC has been very engaged on this product, project and they're.
Good.
And they're excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
I will notify the senior housing committee.
Great.
Um, they haven't met this summer, but I will let them know that we're ready and we'll start scheduling meetings for the fall to get working on our grant applications, so.
That sounds great.
Great.
Yeah, and we'll definitely be in touch with next steps and where we're at very soon.
Wonderful.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Are you rejoining, sir, at, uh, seven fifty-four?
Ready to rejoin if you will have me.
We begrudgingly welcome you, no, we welcome you back, sir.
Take care.
You too, thank you.
You too.
All right, um, two, uh, review and issuance of the special town meeting warrant. Draft slash warrant, not draft. The red line and clean are the new one, right?
This afternoon I sent you a new red line and clean copy, correct?
Okay, and that's. The clean is eight page, right, yeah, that's the right one.
Right. Did you want me to cover what the changes are from the last meeting?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, I'll have it take minutes.
All right, I can touch on them while you're taking minutes, if you prefer.
No, I just had to go do that. Um, so there's a new article one, uh, which was not in your packet at the last meeting, um, but it is a common first request for, uh, the first STM of the year, which is a bill of a prior year article. So these invoices have come in, in the month of July after the fiscal year twenty-four had closed. So it's a request from me to get authorization to pay these three vendors.
No total. That's a fantastic point, let me fix that. Four seventy-three, fourteen, is it? That's what I got. It's probably submitted technically by those departments, which is not just you, but I'm not asking you to change it this time.
We're asking you to change it?
Not this time.
Okay. We can hold this to a future meeting?
Do you wanna hold it or keep it? You mean the warrant or the article?
Well, now that you ask that question, you could do both.
Well, I mean, I know we could, but that would probably delay the STM.
You have time, if you approve at your next meeting, you could, legally, you're fine. August twelfth is, um.
Oh, yeah, we did, we did give ourselves just enough time.
Fifteen days.
Yeah.
Or four, you know, just enough to mail it out the next day.
Which is true, and everybody's ready to do that if that's what you'd like.
Mail it out at that time, you mean?
Right, I, the constables would post the twelfth, and then we could prepare the mailing on the thirteenth and send it out.
I mean, I have no concern with it.
Let's say we're here.
Yeah, I mean, it's not anything unusual or significant, it's a pretty small value, it's a normal, uh, you know, unfortunate but usual occurrence to have a few.
Yeah.
Stragglers that get lost in the mail.
The addition of the new number one doesn't, doesn't bother me.
Okay. Next?
Article, the new article two, which is the, um, general bylaw, adoption of the town code. The only changes that I made with council, council is relatively fine with the language, but we, we just wanted to really drive home the point that we are not changing the zoning bylaw. This is only for the general bylaw, so we just made that one little word change to clarify that sentence in the article. So it now reads all general bylaws of a permanent nature as amended. Or. Or what is appealed, uh, repealed, not the, not the zoning bylaws. Hopefully we made that clear, I tried to go through the article information and clarify it the way the chairman asked, so everything starts off with approval, we'll do blank.
So that last section of that language, so basically it's all general. That we have adopted prior, amended otherwise, and is currently enforced, it's not in the code already.
Right.
Because we've already put some things in the code.
Right.
Does not include zoning because it's general.
Right.
But then the last part does not repeal, uh, the, the repeal does not apply to any bylaw order article that was a provision of a statute of the Commonwealth. Am I reading that correctly, that basically any adopted.
Right.
Provision of a statute of the Commonwealth is not affected, is not repealed?
Right, so you have a series of things that you've just adopted.
In the past.
Right, uh, typically it's the assessors, uh.
You're adopting MGL that you, it's a, it's a local option to adopt, right?
Just because you adopted it didn't necessarily mean that you had a corresponding bylaw. And so this is just saying that because you're repealing previous bylaws, those official actions, you're, you're instead adopting this code in its place, you're not repealing those other votes, is how I read that.
Adoptions or acceptance of statutes, okay.
Right, so if, if there is not a corresponding bylaw.
But they are now referenced in our code, in the new code.
If there's a, if there's a relevant bylaw, correct.
If there's a relevant general bylaw there in there?
Right.
There's a section of the adoptions, aren't there, acceptances?
Those are in the appendices, the appendices.
But they're not in the code.
Correct.
I get you, okay.
Yep.
Which is really a reference, not the code itself.
Correct. Yeah, and that's just to.
I've wrapped my head around it.
That's just to avoid inadvertently, uh, repealing something that we did not intend to change or do anything with while trying to adopt the code.
Right, we're not trying to undo anything that's not code that's been cleaned up and put in the code.
Exactly, that's correct.
So we will be able to have it online as draft, or we'll have it online and we're saying it's draft?
It's already online in a PDF format, the one thing I couldn't get you access to was the database. It's, it's available, but it's behind a, like a login.
I get you.
So, but the, the PDF, both clean and track change is available, and it has been for, for, uh, a period of time.
And the already adopted portions of the code are just sections in, online, they're not in the code, they're, they're not available as the code yet, right?
So the zoning does not appear in the, the proposed code, I think there were two changes that we made at a recent, um, town meeting. I think it was adoption of the cable advisory committee, and I think there was one cemetery commission, I think it was those two. I think they were just presented as part of, uh, in the officials.
In this, yeah, okay. And the proposed doesn't show it, but the final that is currently available to the public will include the zoning.
Absolutely.
So.
Correct.
This is really reflecting only what is still to be adopted, same for a few general.
Exactly.
That we may have adopted already under code, but not.
We were trying to avoid.
They haven't released it in full, yeah.
We were trying to avoid confusing the matter, and we were trying to avoid any concerns that there was somehow an impact to zoning. So we intentionally did not include it in that final, uh, packet, but you're right, once the code goes live, if adopted, the zoning will be already there because it was adopted as such.
Got it. Questions, concerns with that?
No.
Your new article three is the proposed bylaw for the senior citizen property tax workoff program. And I know we've discussed this several times, um, a few proposed edits are in your track changes, uh, town code has recommended a chapter and section that would be assigned to. So they're recommending it is adopted and added to, uh, chapter two oh one, which would fall into the heading of taxation, um, and this would be the first entry into that chapter. The law is, is specific with the language over the age of sixty, and the initial draft that I presented to you just said aged sixty, so we made that correction, so that is consistent with the MGL.
Question on the fifteen hundred versus two thousand is now allowed?
Yes, so, uh, when I presented this to you all, December, January, as a recommendation, um, the law had not changed yet, the governor's office did propose several changes. One was to increase the fifteen hundred to two thousand, um, in the last few months, that has been put into effect. So the MGL has now been, uh, updated, and it is now possible to have an abatement as high as two thousand. So both council and general code wanted the three of you to be aware of that, you don't have to do the maximum, your current threshold is seven fifty, which is why we were proposing a change to get to the fifteen hundred. Um, so I told both parties I would let you all know.
I don't have a problem with it, my only concern is, uh, we don't have the finance committee to weigh in on it, and they've approved it, a recommended approval based on the fifteen hundred language, not on the two thousand. So we either make that change on our own tonight and, and withdraw their recommended approval. Or leave it as is.
I would be in favor of leaving it as is for now.
Yeah, and, and I don't have a problem making, uh, could always have a discussion of potential amendment on the floor.
Okay, the other option is to hold the approval until the twelfth, we have a joint meeting, we can discuss it then.
Yeah.
So, I think we'll.
Well.
We'll leave how we're gonna proceed on that specifically till we decide if we're gonna hold the warrant till next meeting, or if that makes sense, based on the rest of the.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, I mean, based on the breaking out of all six of those into six separate articles, that's not the manner in which it was a, a recommended approval from the finance committee, so now their, their approval doesn't actually exist.
Right.
A recommended approval.
Right, right.
Because they haven't seen this language at all.
Right.
Right, even though it's doing.
It's a bit different.
It's a bit different, yeah.
It's doing the same thing, but in a different presentation, absolutely. Uh, the only other change to the senior citizen program is another change that the law allows.
One point four point eight?
Correct. Um, one point four point eight is an option to allow persons associated with the eligible property owner to work on their stead.
Yeah.
If there is a, um, restriction that would allow them, would prevent them from participating.
Is there a whole thing around the determination piece to that? Because that's vague about how you get there, I mean.
So the other part of this, and the council wanted me to remind you all, is the select board can set reasonable programmatic, administrative policies for this program.
Outside of the bylaws, so, right, yeah. Okay, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
That kind of section would require some policy on determining that eligibility, right?
Correct.
Yes. Because it's not, on its own, it doesn't define it.
Correct.
Uh, one four five.
Right.
One per property per year, unless the number of applicants is less.
So this is a recommendation.
We can do, they could do more than one?
So that's a, this is a recommendation from council, so the question came up, and obviously the spirit of one point four point five is if, if you own a property and two people own that property together, both would not be able to seek the same abatement of fifteen hundred dollars, so a property wouldn't get three thousand dollars. Council was just questioning, was that intentional? If, if the town had budgeted ten slots and five people applied, would we preclude a sixth applicant if they were a cohabitant, co-owner of a property? And so I said I would bring that forward to you all, there is similar language like that in one point four seven, so she thought that was consistent. I could see an argument either way. We have not encountered this situation yet?
Not encountered as in nobody's ever asked?
Nobody's asked, and we haven't hit our cap in a given year. Doesn't mean it wouldn't happen, and doesn't mean.
We have or have not.
Not, have not, right.
So that clause would be exercisable historically.
Correct.
Because we've never hit the cap.
Correct.
So that would, based on past history, actually implement a change.
Could.
That could increase the.
With that being said, you've never had anything that prohibited it either. Part of why we're putting some formalities to all of this.
But I thought we.
We, we've never had language.
Consistent with. Okay. None, all of this language is our bylaw language, none of it's statute language copied, right? What was the question? None of this language is copied from MGL, it's our, it's our language.
It's language. It's language, uh, informed by other communities who have similar bylaws, um, we have adjusted it for us, there are like the, the references to the eligible individual, that is copied because it comes from MGL.
So with regard to one point four point five. That's what I'm, and I'm thinking, is there a way to say, the, the approved abatement per property would not exceed.
The approved abatement per property would not exceed the fifteen hundred. I mean, I'm just looking at one point four point five and four point eight at the same time and creating this thought in my head where Mr. and Mrs. Jones were to apply. And they were both willing and able to work, and they were going to...
For the same property?
Right.
And we didn't hit our cap, so they would be eligible for three instead of fifteen hundred.
Right.
Which is the purpose of adding that language in four five, is to allow more usage because we didn't hit the cap. Like, people didn't exercise the max programmatic amount, right? And so...
Thinking from a point where we're not in what our, historically has been a comfortable fiscal position. Do we want to encourage people at this point to be pushing our cap?
So, the cap is ten, ten participants?
That's our max.
So, we have a line item of fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, right now, it's ten, right?
Well, it was seventy-five hundred first.
Sorry, it was seventy-five hundred.
This will double it to fifteen thousand in subsequent years.
Right.
We budgeted for it. And so, in my mind, if we have ten unique taxpayers' residents from different households that want to use it, we gladly have them take part in that, and there's ten distinct households that are all getting fifteen hundred apiece. If we don't utilize that, I don't feel a need to hold that money back so it turns to free cash. I understand that it's, if there's a way to help out some residents because they're, face it, when you, as you grow older, income gets tighter.
I feel that. Your money goes down.
I'm, yeah, I'm all for allowing a second individual that would qualify on their own, but happens to be a co-owner of somebody who also qualifies to utilize it. I'm okay with the language adding in four point five, because it allows ten unique firsts. We just have to make sure we set parameters on timeline of when the second person would, you know, have a deadline to apply. Because you have to give everybody the full exhausting, I forget what the timeline is, December?
It has to be completed by December one?
Right.
To be reported to the assessors?
Because they, under your preliminary tax bill system, we now, by December twenty-ninth or some date late in December, they must finalize the tax bills for the true portion of the billing cycle, so that that can be issued in time.
And the language says ten residents. It doesn't say ten households right now, so if we did enact the four five, then it's still ten residents. It's just that we would allow more than one resident from the same household, same property.
Correct.
To, if we had not filled all the slots.
Yep.
But your point, is there a cutoff? Is that what you're saying? Where the applications, like, in, I don't know, March, August, whatever, we don't have any, now we allow duplicate sort of...
We'll have to iron that out in some sort of policy.
That's what we're gonna have to...
About how to implement that, so that we have adequate, the town administrator who has to, you know, implement this has notice of, here's when I'm accepting unique applications. When that closes, I will then allow secondary within those existing, if, should they want to apply as well. But we have to just set that timeline and, you know, policy. Yeah, so, going back to the original proposed language, I'm fine with the addition of the last sentence in four point five, one point four point five.
I'm of the same opinion, as long as we give sufficient time from, you know, the initial application due date, or the, I should say, the opening of applications to the due date before we would allow...
Secondary.
Secondary.
Yep.
To be selected. So, it would be all primary, you know, singular first.
For an extended period of time.
Until a specific date, at which point, okay, we've effectively closed the application period. So, if we now have duplicates to fill it, we'd figure out how we select or divvy them.
And we could create that process through a policy, as you're discussing, to address what's in one point four five as well as one point four seven. So, for the people who had served in the previous year, they don't automatically get first opportunities the second consecutive year.
Correct.
But they could come through a, like, a second applicant period if we hadn't filled...
I would personally lean to a preference for an applicant falling in one four seven before a second applicant in one four five.
Right, so that would be part of our policy.
A policy side, but, you know, like that nuance, yeah.
Yep.
When does the period start?
For the service, I believe we said it in July.
I had the same question, I didn't see it.
I don't think it's in the bylaw.
It's not, so that would be policy?
But end date is, because it's when they need to get, the assessors need to have it to be able to actually abate their taxes.
So, we have a little discretion there.
Okay.
I believe the way it should be administered, that the application period should terminate in a way that you can make your decisions and get people started. There may need to be core checks, there may need to be several things.
Early enough to make it feasible.
Right, to be able to actually do the hours. So, that really should be done in January, so that folks are able to start by August, September, at the very latest, so that they have an opportunity to do that work before December first. You're only talking a hundred hours, so it's not a lot of hours, but it has to be done before that December first period. So, you don't want to wait and try to do all of that in a two-month period.
But you're also saying it shouldn't start before July one?
Technically, shouldn't.
Because you want it to be a fiscal year, you want it to be in the fiscal year of the calendar year tax credit?
Right, right. All of those fun nuances and complexities.
Okay.
But if, there's nothing stopping us from setting up the schedule so that people have applied by June or July first or early July date, start the application period early, so that we can do the reviews and make those decisions in July and get folks through the process.
Apply in April, end of May, June first, have June to July or something to get them situated.
Correct.
Allocated and onboard and go.
Exactly.
Again, all policy stuff. However, I was going to say, at this point, it's August first. By the time this is adopted, it's September.
Right.
Basically, yeah.
So, this goes into effect immediately, because it doesn't specify a future date. But if we're gonna do that and keep one four five as proposed and one four eight as proposed, and maybe even seven, I would, definitely, five and eight, I would say, like, effective in the following year. I would push it a year, unless you want to try to come up with a policy, change all that. Like, have we already had people apply? Because we've had the program.
No, we've had inquiries. I think we're looking for this guidance to be formalized, but we can draft that policy for you. If you're generally comfortable with what is outlined in the bylaw, we can prepare the guidance documents and the policy pieces for your review at maybe your August twenty-sixth meeting. So, assuming this gets approved, that stuff could be ready for September. Again, not a huge window, not ideal. This will be better in future years.
Well, I guess I'll go back, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't think the policy, I mean, I'd be willing to work with you on that as well. I don't think it'll be a heavy lift. There's only a couple of factors that happen. It's all about timing and application deadlines.
Well, December one's not barely three months away from when this would get adopted, right? That's my thing. It's not a lot of time, even for a hundred hours. And then if it's times two, times however many, you know? So, so, all I was gonna maybe recommend is that four five is in effect the year after. So, you can put it in there that, you know, beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, this section's in effect. Just because of the nuance of that. If you guys are fine with it and think we can work on a policy and everybody's ready to administer and be able to effectively execute before December one for any, if there are interested applicants, then so be it, but... Because this, adopting this bylaw is doubling where we are today.
Financially.
The eligible, the credit amount a potential volunteer would be eligible for.
Correct.
One four five could potentially double that.
From seventy-five hundred to...
Three thousand.
Well, no.
Per, per... Per property.
Per property.
Not per volunteer, but per property.
Right.
Today...
But not per...
Today, it might be silent, but it doesn't say it's okay. So, effectively, today, it's seven fifty for a property.
Well, depends on how you interpret it, but yes.
Well, it's silent, so it's up to determination. And today, we're saying it, we don't see it that way, that's why we're considering language. So, all I'm getting at is, we're already doubling it. If it's reasonable to administer that by September one for the three-month period, that will be open, fine. But if not, delaying that one more year, but adopting it if we feel it's good.
So, my question is, it references you as administering this. Do you feel the timeline works, or would you like to see it bumped out one more year? Do you have enough time to assist us in drafting a policy over the next three weeks?
We already have examples that we were basing this bylaw off of, so the policy piece is already there. So, the nuance of how you want to administer is what you, the three of you, need to work out. But if it's getting you draft materials for you to review and to discuss, we can do it on whatever timetable you say.
So, you have policy language that handles more than one per property and determination of representative work individuals and...
Yes, but do you, when you find it satisfactory, no.
You have examples, you have a starting point without making it.
Without, without coming, yeah, without building it from scratch, yeah.
Right.
If you have time and you're willing, I'm willing to, I will say my, I have offered up my time, but my bandwidth has been stretched recently.
Yeah, I don't have bandwidth in August to offer, so, for something that we hope to have either nine one or very soon after, I wouldn't be able to, to review it in a meeting, in the one meeting we have between now and then, or two, if we really wanted to. That I'm not concerned about. If you have good draft, you want to draft in place.
If you want it for the twelfth, I can...
Okay.
Good.
All right, then I'm by leaving it.
Moving on to the next section then.
I did have one or two other small things there, not to belabor it, but in one-two-one, probably change it from his/her to their.
Which one is that?
One-two-one.
One-two-one.
Volunteer his/her services, you can do their, their services.
I see, yep, good catch.
And then if we're talking about... In one-three-three, it references per taxpayer. If we're allowing potentially to... Two volunteers to have the full amount of abatement, are they a taxpayer? I think they're taxpayers, so I think it's okay, but I don't know if that language needs to be different.
What section is this one again?
One-three-three. Says, um... Show credit real property tax obligations of the participating taxpayers in an amount not to exceed fifteen hundred per taxpayer. And is that equivalent to per volunteer or per property? And the taxpayer versus taxpayers, is that a person? Or is that a, names on a bill?
Good question.
Is that a single bill, or is it each individual named on that bill? You know what I mean?
My interpretation was each individual, and that's why we had the other language in the...
Further.
Further section saying, you know, spelling that out about, you know, how the second person within the same household.
Okay, I just don't want it to be conflicting, as long as it makes sense and it's consistent with the change in one-four-five.
Do you want me to follow up with council to ask for that clarification, just to make sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I, the way that I read it, I think it's okay, because if you're saying fifteen hundred per taxpayer, that's not prohibiting two taxpayers per property, it's per...
Yeah, I just don't, I, I'm being nuanced, but I don't know the definition of taxpayer. Like, are they named on the tax bill? Are they, like, what qualifies as a taxpayer, right? Do you have to be on the bill? Do you have to reside there as your principal residence only? You know, that's the nuance, but I don't know if it matters.
Right.
Good point. I mean, all of the purpose of this is to be, you know, assistive and beneficial, and so, it's meant to be favorable to that, those parties. The only time it would probably matter is if there was limited spots.
What you're saying is, I can indenture my children to a stock.
Well, I think under one-four-eight, you might be, you know. Anyhow, sorry. He's all good. In one-three-three, when you're doing that as well, and talking to council, that same sentence should probably, it references that there's still eligible for other abatements or exemptions. But that not to exceed fifteen hundred per volunteer, per taxpayer, or their max tax liability after any other abatements or exemptions, whichever's less. Because there's no credit, there's no carryover, there's no check or mail, right? And I know some other sections speak to that a little bit, but just because they're probably worth saying out there. You get three thousand plus some other exemptions, and now we've got a two thousand dollar credit.
Right. Okay, I will review that with council, make sure we get that clarified.
When you guys are working on a policy, one-four-six deals with single more than ten and individual property volunteers over ten, but we'll need to sort out one-four-seven, one-four-five, how we would allocate those slots if we have less than ten unique applicants who didn't do it last year.
Right.
Okay, I have no more on that one, that's funny. I mean, at this point, based on some of that discussion alone and the length of the articles, we haven't even talked about the takings. It seems like we should bring it back on the twelfth.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, we'll bring it back for the joint, and then Finance can weigh in on the ones that have changed, should they wish to. Take that, that an opinion.
Got it. Are you ready for the next ones?
I'm thinking so, but in the article information for the same one, you have taxpayers age sixty and over. You probably want to put as of July one of said year, and you probably want to add a max benefit of fifteen hundred per volunteer at the end there, if we're now allowing more than one per property potentially. Acceptance of the relocation?
Okay, I'll make those changes. Okay, so, what was four, then five, was what you had reviewed at the last meeting. And that was a consolidated taking article for the easements related to the Church Street Bridge. And it was broken out in the table format. Bridge, and it was broken out in the table format for permanent and temporary easements. Counsel got back to me yesterday that her preference would be for us to, instead of having one article that sort of summarizes the taking activity, she would prefer an individual article for every property owner that is specific about how it's impacting their property. So it's not right or wrong, it, from a legal standpoint, she believes is clearer to the voters as to what they're voting on, and is very specific to the property owners that will be impacted, whereas the table refers back to plans that somebody would have to interpret. So this language is language that has been provided by her office. One other thing just to make you aware of, there was on the plans, the, the number of square feet has not changed, but there was a discrepancy in the parcels, the way they're laid out on the northern side of the bridge, a carryover from the 70s when the parcel maps were created, and Key at Brook just looked like a, like a parcel that should belong to somebody, but it was more owner unknown. So the, the engineers assumed the town must be involved in that. So we've gone back and looked into it, the deeds refer to the brook, at the brook, appoint with the brook, so, and deed language sometimes is not perfectly precise. But typically, in their state law for this, typically when there's a water boundary, the center of the brook or the center of the waterway is the boundary. And so we've asked them to, and we've run that past counsel, we've asked them to fix the, the drawings, even though the parcel map has shown this oddity for all these years, so that those parcels accurately show that they come down the middle of the brook. Therefore, on the taking, there is a temporary easement that will have to be attributed, it was being attributed to the town, but it should be partially attributed to one property owner, and the other half of that should be attributed to the second property owner. So these articles do reflect that, but I've asked the engineers to update the plan so that that accurately is reflected, and sent that back to Mast dot so they're aware of, of that clarification.
Okay, and that is five through whatever, I said four, so we'll go back to four.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Did I skip one?
Yeah, that's okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry about that.
It's totally fine. I don't want to go back, we're in the middle of talking about that, there's a lot there, so.
The only other thing to just make you all aware of, and I think you all are familiar, we've been discussing this project for a long time, one of the things to, to be clear about, the temporary easements are the ones that are really in relation to this project predominantly, so that's the, the rip wrap we may have to install for some of the work. That is a temporary overhead utility line relocation for the duration of the project that will then be restored back to its, its existing flow. The only one that has a new permanent easement, actually take one step back, there are proposed permanent easements, they are largely for public utilities, they are capturing existing structures that are already in the field that we cannot find records for. So there are poles with braces and overhead wires on property that should have had an easement by the utility companies, we cannot find record of those, and so Mast dot, through this process, would like us to secure those public utility easements for the existing. The one exception to that is Odin Enterprises, that is a piece of property that runs along the bottom of Flag Hill and along North Street, we've met with the property owners, we are proposing three new poles along your road layout, the poles themselves will be in the road layout, but the overhead wires will have a span that goes over the property, and so that permanent utility easement is for the overhead wires. So while this looks like a lot of activity, it looks like a lot of takings, this is actually not, the permanent easements are really not for the bridge specifically, they have to do with the relocation of utilities and capturing what existing utilities already are in the field. The temporary easements are really the ones that are really for the, the Church Street Bridge project. Everything else for the project is in your existing layout. And we've walked this with the residents, once we have a final plan, we're gonna go back over it one more time with them, but we've made sure that the property owners have seen their plans, walked it with the engineers, discussed this, they've had a few information sessions on it to get feedback, we took all of that to National Grid, we were able to really shrink down the impact on properties with that feedback.
Questions, concerns, thoughts on that, changes?
No, I read through them, it's cumbersome, but it's, yeah, it's clean.
Yeah, and of course, there's little, it may be, you know, 10 more square feet, so there's a little language in there to say more or less, that is the estimated square feet that we need. The plans could be amended one more time, so there's acknowledgement that the plans as amended, but these are the plans that we have as today. So there's a little flexibility in there, but these articles are intentionally pretty tight. Want me to go back to the article?
Anything else on the easements?
Sorry.
No.
You're fine.
Article four, it looks like it was just the article information.
Yeah, um, um, the, the la, uh, second to last events. Your, uh, there's no space between 30 and feet, 30.00.
Got it.
Article one, the title's all cap rather than mixed case.
I will fix that.
There's a half a dozen places, it looks like there's no space, but I think it's just the rendering, so I'm not gonna worry about it, of the different fonts, it's not a big deal.
I will.
Those are the ones that looked inconsistent.
I will fix fonts, spacing, and headings.
I know you will, but that's the only things that were really stood out. And the article information one, fiscal year 25, everywhere else you have FY.
I will fix that as well.
Anything else in four that you guys saw, is really no change from last time?
No changes.
Then, moving back down to, what is now 11, is that right where we are? Yeah, 11?
Yes, now we're at 11.
Wow, okay, thank God. Long, fast?
The only change was the article information.
You just add the word electronic between support and voting at town meeting in the red, in the first sentence. We already can vote.
Yes.
Approve all the article appropriate requests from so a town clerk to purchase equipment to support electronic voting. Or something of that nature.
Okay, I'll make that edit.
Fill out and make do. I like it. Anything else in the overall work? We'll obviously update that to August 12th instead of August 1st.
So I will save these changes today, I'll make all the revisions that we've talked about, put those in red line, go back to counsel on the questions that you mentioned today, incorporate any of that feedback or changes into red line, and get that back to you all, FinCom, Capital, and we'll add it to your joint meeting for the 12th. And I plan to have a constable ready to post.
Yep. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Meeting minutes. There was one later, I did not have a chance to read, did you guys?
No, the January 3rd.
Correct.
I have not read those.
Okay, we'll pass over January 3rd, 2022.
You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Move it right along, make a motion to approve meeting minutes from Monday, April 1st, 2024.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe.
Motion to approve minutes from Monday, April 22nd, 2024.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. And last but not least, motion to approve minutes from Monday, June 10th, 2024.
The second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any other business for this evening? Good, and sir. All right. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:46 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.